Okay, I guess it's six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. We don't have anybody for public comment. So we can go right on with the town administrative report. I expect we're going to set a record tonight in terms of meeting adjournment.
So I have the Harwood Union appointment of the select board, of the school board member on 9/19 during their regular meeting. So the Moretown Select Board can make a recommendation for who will represent Moretown.
Right.
So I think you've been passing on all of the letters that have come, except for one more that came tonight that was in favor of Kristen Rogers.
Like where are the reports?
And the other two members are Denise Russo.
I did a little thing on the front there.
So you didn't have to read them, single letter. She kind of summarized each letter.
Well, that's good. For Kristen Rogers, she's parent and nurse at CVH. Letters of support that we received from Skip Rogers, Rebecca Davis, resident and parent, Peter Langella, former board member, Jason Marion, resident, Sasha Bianchi, resident and parent, Laura Shala, resident and parent, Daniel Mitchell, resident, and Brian Fleischer, resident. Jim Casey ran last year as a write-in. He moved here from Waterbury where he was on the school board. Denise Russo is a parent, worked for the state of Vermont, marketing experience and communications. Linda Hazard, parent, moved here in June, all three kids in Moretown, program director of Vermont Department of Health, a master's degree in audiology, a doctorate in educational leadership and social policy. So...
Kristen Rogers was the only one who got letters of support sent to you from the community.
Right, right. I'm just wondering if the others even realized that we had some say in this.
I have one question about the letters. Did any of the letters emphasize cost control?
I don't think anybody said that.
No?
No. Another one?
Uh-uh.
Well, then I have no opinion.
So you've got three choices: not to make a recommendation, or to write a written recommendation, or have someone go for the select board and make your resident your recommendation if you want to verbally.
Okay. Now, did you talk to Tom about that? See if he'd be available?
No, you don't think Tom is going to be available.
Okay.
I didn't talk to him and ask him.
Okay.
Last week I thought he said he was going to be out of town for a couple of days.
Okay. So if we make a recommendation tonight verbally, how does that get to them?
I drafted a letter.
Okay.
And it can be...
It can be modified if whoever...
Yeah, whoever, yeah.
We didn't even know there was other candidates until today, so it's my...
Okay. Well, why don't I do this? To make it official, why don't I move that we recommend Kristen Rogers as the Moretown representative to the Harwood Union Unified School District?
That's basically it.
Second, Kelly seconds. Any more discussion?
Yes.
Yes?
I've got mixed feelings on this one. I very much appreciate the effort that Kristen put in writing to the board, getting recommendations, actually coming to the board and responding to questions, which I feel she answered very well. On the other hand, this was just brought up, we don't know if the other candidates even knew of the select board's involvement.
They should have.
They should have.
They should have checked into that.
And the other part is, I don't feel that I have a lot of knowledge of all the candidates to make a really wide consideration. Now, the effort that Kristen went through counts for quite a bit, so I'm not saying, "No, I don't want to make a recommendation," but I feel that...
How well does any of us know candidates?
Exactly.
Really?
Exactly.
When Peter Langella ran on the ballot, you know?
Well, then it's more a town's decision.
And this person's only on until town meeting, until March. And then I have a run, person won't have to run, so this is...
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Same way you wasn't thinking when I was talking. I think I'm going to abstain on this one. I don't feel like I have enough information to make a recommendation.
Okay. All right, well, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And Jason abstains, okay. So the letter says, "Dear Ms. Sullivan," that's Christine Sullivan, the board chair, "The town of Moretown received several letters of support requesting Kristen Rogers be considered for appointment to fill the vacancy on the Harwood Union Unified School District Board. At this time, the town of Moretown Select Board respectfully recommends that Kristen Rogers be appointed to the HUUSD School Board as Moretown's representative to fill the vacancy until town meeting in March 2019." And so I'll start then. Okay.
Send that to Christine in the morning.
Okay, great. Hey, Carl.
Good evening.
You here for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Shoot.
So today's Monday, I'm going to go on the website and look at the agenda.
Okay.
There's no agenda on the website.
Okay.
For the select board meeting.
That was my fault.
I'm wondering why.
Because when I emailed it to JV, I hit the wrong John, and he didn't notice that I had sent it to him, that's why.
Okay.
So we contacted JV, and it was on there, should have been on there mid-morning today.
By noon, it wasn't there, so... It's pet peeve of mine.
It should be.
We're, you know, I can't relate, and now sort of I don't want to bother you guys so much. And my other unrelated public comment would be, sorry I missed the meeting about subdivision last week, but maybe you should consider a grandfather clause if you want to put in subdivision regulations. Maybe they begin at a date certain, after which properties purchased after that time would fall be subject to that, and those who have property owned before that time could go with the old regulations. I think there's been grandfather stuff before. And I don't see why that might not be a compromise that could be made with the subdivision regulations.
It's there.
It's there?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
So you mean every property, like a property that's owned or is owned before the regulations come in, is grandfathered, not just the subdivisions that were started before?
Yeah, I think anything from whenever they're enacted, prior to that should be, could be, should be, could be exempt or grandfathered. And I can't think of exact examples of things that are grandfathered. We have, I think we have in the past, grandfathered certain...
Yeah.
Thank you.
And what about if the property were to change hands? Does it go with the property or the...
I think it goes with the ownership.
Ownership?
Yeah.
Okay.
But owned at the time of the regulations.
Yep.
So we got... I have a question for you on that.
Yeah.
Is there anything in the current proposed regulations that you believe is harmful or that...
I haven't. I don't know if there's any changes that have happened since the meeting back in August or July.
Just suggestions.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
And we do have a list of suggestions. If you ever interested in those.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll probably submit something myself. I saw maybe some comments by October, I think, or something.
Yeah, by the beginning of October.
I'm just thinking, if any changes don't work for you, they probably don't work for a whole category of people.
Yeah, I know. I just, I'm always wary of the shells in there and the... Anything that isn't carefully spelled out, which may give the ERB too much leeway in their analysis or, you know, it's just anything that's mandatory with a shall or a, or something that is so vague that it can be interpreted in who knows how many different ways. So that's, I guess that's... Specifically, I can't tell you right now, but, you know, I know there was some landscaping things in there and some road language that was kind of either vague or too broad to, you know, try to figure out where you were going with it, so... But like I said, I'll try to sit down and write something up and let you all know and thank you.
Thanks, because I'd rather fix it than not.
Yeah. So, great, thank you.
Okay.
So I got, any good one on tonight?
No, very short meeting. All right, well, thanks for your input, Carl. Appreciate it.
The second thing that I have is Moretown applied for... If you remember, we've got to do the disaster litigation plan, and I asked you if I could apply for a grant to have CVRPC. We got the grant, $10,150.
Good.
So CVRPC will be assisting with the grant.
Okay.
I... They said that they could do it for that amount. I mean, we'll send out, with the guidelines, February guidelines, of course. We'll send out RFPs and the bid process, whatever, but... So we'll get that paid for and submitted a PMA.
Tremendous, thank you.
Yep. And the last thing that I have was just something food for thought. I think the Montgomery Timber Appeal is going to be going to court. My food for thought would be, do we want to keep with Paul Gillis or do we want to get Ron Schutz involved? So Ron Schutz charges $150 an hour, Paul Gillis charges $140 an hour. So that's just something for you to think about.
Okay. Yeah, because it would be good to have the other two board members.
Yes.
Yeah, for that.
That's all I have.
Wow, okay.
I had a good time before.
Well, that's right, yeah.
I told Donnie, and I want to see Kelly.
Oh, good. Kelly, you have anything?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So I went to the budgeting workshop on Tuesday.
Oh, cool.
It was fantastic.
Oh, good.
The town administrator in Wakefield did a presentation on town reports and putting the budget in the town report and how to sell the budget to the townspeople, which is very interesting. He did a really good job with it. So his PowerPoint wasn't in the folder that we got, so they're going to email that. So when I get that, I'll send it out. Because his presentation was really good. They talked about water grants. The last presentation was long. It was legal.
Yeah.
Legal stuff.
I hear you.
And it was very dry. But other than that, it was really good. The first half and then the rest.
Good. Did they cover anything about tracking the budget once a budget is passed? And what reports do you receive?
And what it looks like is every town is different. Because they give us a copy of Hartford's, and that was challenging to read. Like their highway department has a summer budget and a winter budget. And it's all categorized, and it's all over the place, so...
We actually have a summer and a winter budget, too. But it's all combined in our reports, it's all combined as one.
It's a lot easier.
Yeah, because your bottom line is your bottom line.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. And that was one of the things that they said in presenting in the town reports, is to keep things as clear and concise as you can and to think more general, but also think for those deeper questions, because some people anticipate what people are going to want to know, so you're prepared to answer it.
This is your first full budget you're going to be going through, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You're going to be getting a draft budget at the next meeting. No, the next 15. So that'll be good, that you can look at that, and hopefully we'll have Wakefield's. Because I think what Wakefield does is they put their operating budget, what's spent, and they also have their revenue in there as well, right? So that's a manipulated report. That can't be done off of our system. But if that's what you want, we can do it for the town report. You can do anything you want for the town report.
The one thing they also talked about is different ideas if you want, just trying to get people more aware of doing open houses. And they would do like a traveling kind of part of the day where if the highway department wants a new truck or something else, and the fire department wants a new truck, you can go to the highway department, talk to the people there, walk around, see what things look like. Then you can go, just walk around, they have like an open house, different tours.
To show what they need, yeah.
Yep. Safety videos, time-lapse videos.
So they had to, the departments, did you see that the departments had to prove to the select board why they need this? What their summer plans were on the roads and why they needed more budget in their culverts or more... Yeah.
And this is more of like getting it out to your townspeople, to present it in a way that they can see it.
Right. And who, who encouraged the departments to... Did they say who encouraged? Was it the select board encouraging, the road department?
I think...
Road formal?
It was. It was coming from either the select board or the town administrator or the town clerk saying, "Hey, this may be a good idea." I guess Berry used to do a tour, but...
Berry Town. I've gone to a couple of those at Berry Town.
Yeah, they have tours, they were doing some.
Yeah, every town handles them different, how you request for particles, I guess, you know, how... And...
What I'm afraid of in that approach is it sounds like a way to make it easier to sell budget increases. It doesn't sound like a way to go over budgets to look for savings or what could be done to control.
And that's why really, in our town report, we've never had the revenue in there. Because of course, your revenue shows in there if you got a grant. You spent $40,000 out for a grant, you got reimbursed $37,500. The difference was your town pay.
I was talking more of the open house than the revenue idea.
Okay.
So...
It's a way for the people in the town to go see why. The example that he used was in one highway garage, to move trucks in and out because of the size of it, they had to spend a half an hour to an hour moving stuff around, back and forth. And no one really understood why in the town. So they did a video, and they did a time-lapse video where you can see it going through and how long it takes. And that was very eye-opening, just for the public to say, "Oh, okay, there's actually..."
That sounds...
Yeah, yeah. Well, good. Thanks for attending that. That's tremendous.
Berry would be good, because I...
Yeah, sure.
Now I get it.
It's a learning process for here, for sure. It'd be good.
Jason, do you have something?
No, I have a work in progress on going over the town descriptions and seeing how they lay out. And it was very handy that you highlighted whoever did, the yellow stuff that was moved. And what we don't have is for each task, we don't know the hours for each individual task. That's...
Yes.
Not realistic. And without knowing the hours, it's hard to put it together into 40-hour packages or 20-hour packages.
Yeah. I think you gave him what I suggested for the time, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's from experience.
Exactly.
You know, kind of the time from what I've experienced. Sometimes, you know, I mean, sometimes you're right in the middle of a project and something of more priority comes along, so...
Yep.
Yes, that'd be hard.
Okay. Well, the only thing I have is I would like to thank Katrina for a job well done in organizing Morefest.
Thank you.
Very, very good time.
Yeah, I was, I'm very happy with the way it turned out. Yep. The only suggestions I've received for next year was more food, which we knew going into it, we didn't have enough. So that was the biggest one, yep.
Now, are we going to stick with that same timeframe for next year?
It's going to be a week earlier.
A week earlier?
It's going to be the weekend between Labor Day and summer fair.
Yeah, that's a good...
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that's right, yeah.
Because I believe there wasn't anything happening that weekend, so I was trying to remember. I'm like, I don't think there was really anything going on, so...
Yeah, that's good.
Week earlier, yeah.
Yep, that'll be good.
Was there anything else people mentioned that they might like to see?
Um, there was a few. We needed more shade. We knew it was going to be 85 degrees that day. Moving the band closer. I think, actually, Dwayne and I talked about it that evening, that we might get a flatbed trailer and put it in the middle of the field so the band is actually on the field rather than over there. And...
More food vendors?
Yeah, really, it was just more food. Yeah, and I got actually a pretty long email about they really liked the historical society's display, and they want to see more of that, more of their, the history of the town display every year.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Now, maybe we could move them in under the gazebo or something where they could really spread it out, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but having rave reviews from everybody. We had almost 200 people, which is way more than what we normally have.
Yeah, that's good.
And that was just from me standing there counting. At one point, by the time I hit like 1:00 E.D., I hadn't gotten to the beer tent, so...
I didn't hear one bad thing about the Beer Town event, which is...
Sheriff was very happy. He said he had no problems with anybody who comes, with thriving, parking, nothing.
Did it get busier later as far as the Beer Town? Because I didn't see a lot of people there.
Well, there was probably about 30, 40 people in there about 6:30, 7 o'clock, yeah. After most everything had died down, that's where everybody was. But then, I mean, once fireworks started too, I bet there was more like 250 down here because the back parking lot got full, too. I mean, because we sent people to where the car show was to park. So the fireworks are pretty big.
Yeah. Tremendous. Fun time.
Fourth annual, I think, right?
Fourth annual, yeah.
There's a pretty good place in the ocean.
There was, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think...
Sprinter or something? Sprinter, is that what it was called? Sprinter from the side of it?
Which one's, which one's that?
I'll call it that.
I don't know, I just noticed the car. I think it was a Camaro. I love different ones.
I do remember.
But 700 block engine or something like that, it's like...
Yeah. Well, I, for Moretown's choice, I mean, I thought that Corvette, the '64 Corvette.
The light one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it was all original.
Yeah.
Even the paint.
Mm-hmm.
I mean...
It's beautiful.
Yeah, it really was.
I wonder what that would go for on Barry Jackson auction? Oh, original like that?
Yeah, really, yeah.
I like that '56 Chevy.
That I liked, too. Yeah, the Bel Air, yeah. Yeah, it was, it was very tough to make that decision. It was a very pretty car. What's that?
We used to have one of those.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, what else we have here? This is from Don Budson. "I made the change on our house and the house index, but was just told that the listers have opted to not have us update the index for them, so they will need to make these changes in their CAMA." C-A-M-A.
So they've decided not to have NAMR updates of index.
Okay.
So when title search has come in, it's not correct.
Okay.
Well, the listers, they've decided not to have CAI do it. I talked to Mike Endeavour this afternoon, and they're going to be doing it themselves.
Okay.
Updating the CAMA. I asked them what the fee would be to have them, to have CAI do it, and they said there would be a fee, not a whole big fee, but there would be a fee. So I know you're looking over an estimate for NAMR to do work to help the listers. So I don't know if that's something that you want to ask at the time to make sure that they are doing the CAMA work as well if you decide to go with us. For what work? For CAMA, C-A-M-A, that's the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, and one of the risks there is that any work over what they think has to be done costs us $75 an hour.
Yeah, original contract gives two.
Yeah.
So also, what I found, too, when I was looking at that, I actually have a copy of their original contract. We've had them since 2012, and their price hasn't changed at all. And they've never gone over. Just for your information.
So that is some additional liability to the estimate. And I'm just thinking that another way to cover that risk is anything that starts going over could be additional work for our listers instead, which would be a cheaper way possibly, depending on what it is.
Yeah.
So that might be a way to worry less about the $75 an hour for overage. And thank you for giving me that proposal.
Oh, yeah, it's just, there's copies there if you guys want to have them.
Yes, indeed.
And it's the same one every year I found.
Okay.
They got this one.
Yeah, they got that one last time.
All right. Next thing is Pony Farm guard rail from the town garage. It says, "Good morning. I just hung up with Lafayette Sheldon Company regarding the guard rail installed to protect the house on Pony Farm. Yesterday, price was more than I expected. They quoted me $1,690 install. Thanks for Martin."
Can you have me look at a grant? There's no grant for it. I can look.
Thank you.
I took it with an erosion problem.
Yeah.
Or something.
There's lots of grants for that.
So is he, he's looking for EA or N.A.?
Uh, no, they just, I think the homeowners waiting for the town's opinion. And I don't know if Martin's talking about it. I can check with Martin.
Is there any precedent for sharing cost and something like that?
Of course, I would say they could pay the whole thing if everyone wasn't wanting. I mean, Martin said it wasn't needed as a road, as far as road safety goes.
Okay. Okay. And then we've got the notice of the alleged violation for the Mad River management, resource management alliance.
Is this the same thing we had last year?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And you saw my email from John Mulder.
Yeah.
He'll get it in for the, for the violation day, September twenty-fifth or whatever. But then he's gonna have an audit done, rightfully so. It's good job by them, I think, to be on top of that stuff. So that the representation of how much we're actually shipping here in this district.
Uh, this is an interesting letter.
Oh, you weren't here last week when they read that last week.
Oh, they read it last week? Okay.
But, and they asked for Max, the man that watched Don and his land. So I put Max in there and I didn't, I think, maybe, didn't Tom ask Ray to drive up maybe and see what it looked like? I can't remember.
Oh, is it Graham's?
Yes. But he's also, I hadn't had a chance to look at it. He's got a major change with the tax nuts. But I have a look to see if I can find, I haven't done the background work yet.
It was also been asked Martin if that's been used.
Yeah, for like a turnaround or something because it wasn't very big. So you can leave that in until next time if you want.
Okay, so it's, it's only point four or five of an acre or?
It changed, I think, right? Did they go from point four or five to?
Oh, right, right, yeah, right, right, okay.
So I, I'm gonna try to figure out which one it actually is.
Okay. Okay, and these are, we've, again, comments, okay, comments to the subdivision. And we saw this one too, right, on the, the letter from Kathleen Skomit.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that yet.
Right.
I expect she's gonna be used as a witness for the defense. Because she doesn't like the way the new trails laid out. So we'll see.
Yeah.
That's one of my concerns on.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what that comes up now?
We have not, we have not, um, received any reply back from our comments yet that I have seen. That would be the next step that. We answered the questions of Montgomery Timber. And I haven't seen anything more on the. My guess is, um, the first thing will be a request for both parties on mediation. They always do. So you could be thinking about options, bargaining.
I'm still hoping we won't be a party.
You'll definitely be a party because they appeal to decisions.
But we may not need to be an active.
Well, no.
Yeah. We'll see.
Yeah. That's it. I mean, when we know, then we'll be your, you have to think about who's gonna pursue this for the town. I don't think it would take anyone too long to catch up. I have, when this started, I started writing down what happened and when. And so I've got a whole flow chart of what happened and when, right up to this, right up to the appeal.
Where's your flow chart start?
I don't know, remember what year. I think it was two thousand thirteen or two thousand twelve.
Twelve, yeah.
Because there was a lot of activity predating that and me.
Yep.
If that's documented anywhere.
Yeah, 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 I've got a summary on that. Tell them I can keep it straight.
Yeah, for sure, because all those years we thought the trail was, you know, that location that, that has been used and so on and so forth for all those years.
Yeah, and I copied all the notices. You've got the mystic. So I don't think it will take someone too long to figure out what's going on.
Okay. So let's move on to the minutes, approval of nine four.
Were you here, John?
I was, I was late, yeah. But that is true, that you don't have to, supposedly you don't have to be there.
That's what you said, but.
Okay. That's certainly not the way that I have always been doing it, so. So.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the heads.
Second.
So can we, uh, so we don't have enough board members to approve them?
Oh, if you weren't here. Right?
Yeah, we're here for the whole thing, yeah.
In case Jason and Tom have something that they want to add to our, you should just.
I'll put it back on the next one.
Yeah.
We're giving you this special. Special meeting on that.
And the same with nine ten?
Uh, nine, ten.
You were one.
We were all here, what? Yeah, so we can do that.
And then you got this second copy that was a lot clearer than the first.
Yeah, yeah.
That was JP. I was like, I sent it to him and he's like, let's go with this one.
Unless, you know, the board wants to wait until we have a full board for those two, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, nice.
That's might as well exist.
Yeah, might as, might as well, yeah. Okay, old business, uh, the Waterbury Ambulance Service.
I have some stuff for you, but I'd rather everybody be here.
Okay.
Because I, yeah.
Okay, I didn't choice that record.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then NIMR.
Well, you talked about it a little bit already.
And I, I would say that we should do the finance committee update, um, seeing that, Charlotte did make deposit of five hundred thousand to Northfield Savings Bank for the.
Northfield Community.
It came out of community and went into the CD.
The nine, the nine month CD at two percent.
Nine month, two percent, excellent.
And the, um, I did want to mention that it is not totally FDIC insured, but it's backed by, um, their mortgages, so.
Northfield Savings Banks mortgages that are something we're gaining.
The first two hundred and fifty thousand is the equivalent of FDIC insured and then thereafter?
Well, the first two fifty, but, um, well, wait a minute, we already have, no, we don't have anything there. Yes, we do have something there, yeah.
Yeah, we have the cemetery.
We have the cemetery funds.
And the rep fund, I mean, not half funds, sorry.
That's about a hundred.
But you're right, still, the first two fifty is FDIC insured of all of our funds together. And the balance, the total balance, is insured by the Northfield Savings Banks via the collateral of the mortgages.
Is the cemetery fund there under Town of Mortown or Cemetery Fund of Town of Mortown?
Town of Mortown.
If that were Cemetery Fund of Town of Mortown instead, that would not impact the two fifty K amount for the rest of the town?
Right, but I think it's fifty thousand or something like that. It's not, it's not. It's a perpetual fund.
Okay, anything you want to add to that or?
No.
Good. And the.
The other thing I wanted to add to that is that we're not gonna see a five hundred dollar loan item for the coming year for interest. So.
Right, right.
Because you only deposited five hundred thousand and five hundred thousand is gonna be still available to use for payments and.
Right, right.
Instead of a TAM, right?
Right, yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to make that clear in the minutes in case something went out wrong with you or the other.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, um, other old business, um, I think we've talked about whatever else. I, I would say that the Harris screening plant can be taken off.
I asked Tom about that and I think he's, I think this, this plan is still to plant trees, isn't it, but?
No, we'd have to order some more.
Maybe it can be taken off until it's mentioned again. I don't know. I mean, there would have to be, there would have to be, um, measurements and everything taking in, I guess, is.
Yeah.
So we'll take it off.
All right, listen, just, just leave it on that. So any new business? Okay. Want to do anything else? Besides sign, sign the order sheets?
I can tell you Stefan and I are going to a, um, grant writing workshop for, what are the names of those grants? Fire department ones?
It's, uh, Assistance to Firefighter Grant.
We're going to a grant writing workshop on Thursday. People that decide, tell you how to write them. So we're going to that.
Well, this is the benefits of having Cheryl and Katrina. Because, boy, oh, boy, in the olden days, you know, there's no way we'd ever end a meeting this early. So thank you for a job well done.
You're welcome. Yeah, the only half time I was, did more.
Yeah.
Well, my shell email, we had said my pie came in third.
Nice. I'd still have to bring your plate down. I still have a pile of WarFest stuff on my table in the back of my.
John, this is for you. She called again. Said that you had called her, Carol.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
And she's very interested in getting appeasement.
Right.
So have you heard from Pat Travis?
Yeah, yeah, uh, he, he's had some family issue and so I actually called her today. Oh, that's her, her, oh, good. She's probably calling back tonight. Uh, it would be either tomorrow or, or Wednesday.
Yeah, that's her number there.
Good, okay.
She works at the Department of Taxes.
Ah, okay. All right, good, thanks.
Do we have other outstanding, uh, railway issues?
Nope, that's it, that's it.
And that, we only have that one because the state pulled that into the project. Or which I am going to, I'll remind them of if we run over budget.
She was in here today working on stuff for the bridge down there too.
Yeah, for the other bridge. Grandma was out here to bring the camera. Do you know what that was about? Was that the watershed?
Oh, yeah, um, they, uh, videoed me on the Grandma's Bridge. So it's from Bridge to River, uh, we're all, we're basically tracing the Mad River.
Yeah.
Down and, and Maya was talking about the, the, the fact that the, we have steep, narrow valleys here.
Yeah.
And so I figured Grandma's Bridge is a great place to shoot it, so.
It is.
He had me right in the, the bridge and looking so you could see right, uh, down river, so.
That was, um, that bridge is in a lot better condition than Grandma's, when my grandparents owned that.
Ah.
Up there where Mary lives.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's why it's called Grandma's.
Oh, okay. That was Grandma, because it was Grandma's restaurant.
Yeah. But they bought it from my grandparents. Bud.
I didn't know that.
So what's the condition of that bridge?
Well, it's a lot better. It used to be, there used to be planks that were missing like this and you know, kids trick or treating, you know? My brother would say, oh, no, stop there, there, just kidding. Well, you gotta float down in the water. You know, some of the bridges used to be open and only the wheeled base of the cart was, had the planks.
No, it's, it's, it still impresses me every time I'm on that bridge. It's, that is a neat spot. It's down there.
Yeah, it's a ways.
All right, anything else? Make a motion to adjourn?
Exactly.
Wrong favor? Okay.
I'm set.